Nothing like yourself.
He's pulling up right here after you. He cares about you. He just wants to be in the fold. Oh, it's all right, you're fine. Thank you. Here are you. Yes, we do. Now, we should go on. Let's start this. Those years are me. We probably don't want to lose it. That you will do that. You can walk and talk at. See you.
It's not true.
Northern eighteen is easy. It's all of them. Hackers have got into everything now. It's worldwide. Can't get over some of my friends all over the court.
Let's call him on the special meeting Thursday, February twenty second, twenty twenty four, City Council change is twelve o'clock. Wrong call, please.
Mr. Batters?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Dassler?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Washington? Mr. Ruben?
Here.
Mr. the Law?
President.
Number one, resolution concerning permission, permission appointment to the great Alexander Economic Development Authority gave to remove Candace Cheney as commissioner. Make a motion.
Please.
Well, that was driven such words, say that was misspelled.
Public comment. We have few people here sign us to talk. First, Miss Carnese White.
God bless you, everybody. Thank you for coming. News Channel five. We shouldn't wait till they get here. And I still have a question because nobody's been able to answer this. Why did y'all cancel that meeting Monday? And we want to see the paperwork to prove that you canceled it. Also on Channel four. I don't know if the hackers got to Channel four. People that watched and said they couldn't watch the city council meeting Tuesday. So I want some answers to that. And like I said, I want to put in the record why that meeting was canceled about Miss Snow. There was nothing wrong with Miss Snow or this young lady here.
About Miss Snow right now. This is about Miss Candace Cheney.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying we need to have the paperwork for that. It is germane to us. It's not germane to y'all. It is germane to us. No, I got something to say.
We will speak.
Look. But you won't let people speak. When Ned Randolph was here, people could talk. Only when John Lord was here, people couldn't talk. Look, I came up here with my feet messed up. I'm probably dying. So let me speak. Look, I have a right to speak. Now, I would sit down because I signed up for a session. I have a right to speak. This is racist. This is racist what you're doing. There's no reason to remove that woman. There's no reason to remove me. Look, no sir, I'm not going. I'm sitting tight. I'm a veteran. I fought for this company. You're a bunch of cowards. All of you. I'm a damn coward. You're nothing but a coward. No, this is stupid. No, hate America. You're nothing but a bunch of damn cowards. This is racist. This is what they did. This is Black History Month. And you're gonna sit there with a black person? You can replace the white woman with a white man? I have a right to speak.
Carnese, let's walk outside. Get him out of the street.
Mr. White?
You better not.
Look, I'm pro police and pro military. But you can't do this.
Let's walk.
When them people see this, they're gonna have y'all.
Let's walk outside.
I have, I got, well, I want to say something on the second thing.
Walk outside and walk outside.
No, sir.
Carnese, please talk now.
No, sir.
Come on, let's walk outside.
No, he said, Carmen.
He told you that.
Come on, Lee Ruben. I mean, Jim.
I need you. Hold on, please. Keep your mouth shut and you stay.
I'm not, no, no, no.
I'm keeping my mouth shut. I'm keeping my mouth shut.
No, 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 no. That is not, that's way out. Keep my mouth shut. Way out.
Man, play that.
I keep, that's not, oh, you're not doing it.
That's so, they're not trying to.
We ain't playing that.
You're disrespecting.
I don't think I'll.
Man, it's not a child. It's a roommate.
Look, I don't. Go outside. I'm not going outside. There's no reason.
That's how the law.
You were three old men like this. I have a right. I'm not leaving. Now, he said I can stay. That's not, I am one of them.
Set up a council as it's fair.
Y'all are a country of cowards. Cowards.
Like we're talking to the dog.
Leave me alone.
It's like they're nothing. That needs to stop. It needs to stop. You don't give much respect and you two can sit on that city council.
He said I had to stay.
I'm not looking down. It's enough of that. You elected to an empty position.
No, no. I'm sitting here. I'm dying. I'm staying.
Stop it, you little bitch. Y'all talking about something you believe. Sorry, that's what they want is like. Don't believe in God. The hell avoids the same a weak disagree with me. You guys are doing a lot of things.
I'm done. I'm not gonna stand right here, right now.
Enough.
Empire. Listen, Miss Barry, you don't come by my house.
I'm nothing.
You don't see the way it looks. I don't want nothing from you, Lizzy. You definitely missed snow for no reason and put a white lady in.
Hey, would everybody like to step on that side?
We can all. They're clean, they're up. Everyone, they can talk.
I want to talk here.
Go to hell.
I can't hear my feet wash. I can't hear. It's cold out here. They're not. So they, they say, hey, Mom.
Just, just give it some point.
No. No.
There's no. He used to walk outside and bring that.
I'm tired of this. When Ned Randolph was here to speak. Ever since racism's all right, God, you can't say a damn thing. Well, I can't let things control.
Oh, okay. Hold on one second.
But it's not the truth. It's not the truth. You can't, you tell the truth. It's like I'm going to church. I want to know everything. But see, they can block Channel four.
We're, we're moving on the outside because Alexandria Police Department has said they would like for us to, to, to.
They blocked Channel four because people been watching Channel four for the meeting on the twentieth. They showing the meeting on.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm still live too, sir. I'm still. We're at the Alexandria City Council meeting. In Alexandria, Louisiana, there's a special committee meeting. Councilman Lee Ruben has a motion on the table to replace Candace Cheney. Alexandria Police Department asked that we leave the room. So, you know, I'm, I'm getting kind of confused in here about what media can cover and what they can't cover because I didn't see anything hampering them from doing their duty on the inside.
But they're so used to talking to us like that. We've allowed this and it's enough. It's enough. We talked to my girlfriend. He didn't choose to let them talk to us, you know, say. And we better.
Guys, we're gonna go ahead and keep it live here. We're not going to come off so you guys can actually see the dynamics of what's actually going on in Alexandria City Council Special Council Meeting. Mr. Scott. Care to make any comments about what's going on?
Jake, I ain't gonna be good right now.
It, it's not gonna be real good. You're, you're live, right?
I'm live, Jake.
You're live?
I'm talking about that. Believe in that bullshit. Talking to a man like that. Wrong. Tell me to shut up. Bitch, I'm so lyric, every, every bitch on this thing.
If you guys can, uh, listening right now, uh, Mr. White is saying his, his constitutional rights of freedom of speech is, uh, being violated. Okay, so some folk are asking what, what actually happened. Pretty much what's happening, there's a special council meeting going on today to. Well, we, we're here to let them know what's going on. It's, it's a ton of people that, uh, that are here. And they are. We were asked to lead the council meeting because there was one citizen demanding his right to speak. So if you guys can hear me. Hopefully, uh, we're gonna continue to move forward with this particular meeting. Here shortly. But as you guys can see, uh, quite a few folk are getting a little upset. What happened? You are so right, Miss QT. Miss Queen T. We do need as much of prayers we possibly can get. I said.
They don't have equal skin. They don't have the communication skill. And they have issue with profession. Who is anyone who can pass the seat of the president and the tax attorney? This is an unwelcome feeling and somebody who can just be held. And there should be so type of. We think how soon to. It's not fair to people, no matter what the city, um, he said. For us to be a candidate, what's this? And for us to be able to ask for them. Whether it may not initially be able to ask for them. And here's some data. I have the information. And of the destiny of three years. They're both. And this is part of the thing not.
Mr. White is continuing to scream in the council chamber. Not sure what's going on. Were you confused about Miss Battles? The police are probably rationally asking us to remove ourselves from the, uh, proceedings of what was going on in the council chamber. How's it going? It's, it's a drama going on right now. Uh, Miss Battles, no, no one has been replaced at this point. We was in the public comment section of the, um, meeting and, um, some words were said. I think, uh, Councilman General Laura told, uh, a, a citizen to shut up. Or he was gonna put him out. Her words stood out effect. And at that point, uh, the citizens didn't take too kindly to it. I think we can go back in, so I'm just gonna keep the live going. Yeah, get back over here, my butt.
Do you believe it?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm saying, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm gonna tell you. I'm saying.
Thank you so much.
I'm done. I don't like the game tomorrow.
Well, there's some places I can go, but there's millions of people listening.
Can you sit right here? And so, no, I got real witness, so I'm. I'm not gonna say nothing, baby. No words about that. Go on, no, sit right here. Sit right here, Lily. Sit right here, Lily. I'm gonna be good, don't you? I'm gonna be good, Lily. I told you that. And he said, don't say nothing. I'm not gonna say anything.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate it.
Miss Batters?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler? Mr. Washington? Mr. Ruben?
Here.
Mr. the Law?
Here.
Mr. the.
Continue on. I don't want resolution concerning the permission for appointment to the great Alexander Economic Development Authority gave to remove Candace Cheney as commissioner. This argument, we're still in this.
Yeah.
Well, we're not doing this.
We had the motion on the floor because we were, Mr. Ruben, his second role is.
Let's go. Okay, we're back to, uh. Uh, Ms. McCollum?
Definitely, I'm sweet with McCollum. And my question is, why are you such in a hurry to remove Ms. Cheney from this position when it's becoming a thing on your position, Mr. Ruben, will be up anyway? So what is the hurry? What is the, the idea that you need to do it right now at this moment? I understand that the ordinance, the new ordinance is putting these things that you guys can do that. So what is the hastiness of this?
I tell you what. Remember, you know, we all have that, that particular, uh, right to do that. We all have the right to appoint someone far from our district. I'm a big framework man. I cannot go in, cannot go out to any kind of details. But I just tell you. Just tell you that speaking for myself and, and speaking for myself, okay? I'm not happy with the way things have been running, running lately, the game. And I want to see a change in the way things are being run.
Okay.
That's the reason, that's the reason I'm making my change.
Okay, so when you're saying you're not happy with it, can you be more specific on that?
No, I do, I do not give you the specifics.
Okay.
Uh, of that, I'm.
So it's, is it, uh, the idea that wherever you put in there can control whatever you got, what you want? Is that what it is?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
So I'm trying to figure out why, what is the dissatisfaction with what Ms. Cheney's job, what she's been doing?
I just, I just, I just gave her that answer. I cannot and will not order specific items, uh, except that I'm just not happy with the.
So why couldn't you find, um, if you were to do this, whoever you found? Why couldn't you find an African American to put in that place opposed to finding a white male to put in that place?
You know.
I'm talking to him. I'm not. Mr. Ruben.
You know, I just, that, be honest with you, just really, truthfully, never crossed my mind. I was looking for, I was looking for somebody that I hoped and thought would do a very good job in that position. I did not consider the fact of, of his ethnicity, you know, or, or his gender that had come into it all. I, I have selected a person that has previously served on that board and has served as the attorney on that board for many years.
Okay.
That he has served, uh, you know, and I feel like he's a, he is a qualified, very qualified individual that will run, help run the game as it was originally designed, designed to be. And I think we've gotten away from all of that. And I just wanna, and that's, that's my reason. I'm just not happy with the way things are.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I've done. And that's, you know, and I know somebody might want to turn this into a racial again, this.
It is. It's always racial here. You don't have to. Let's not, you can say that because we already know. We know the whole thing. And let me say this. The optics of what's going on here. People are watching. The optics what people are seeing, they're watching very closely.
You know, when, when came up, we came up, several of us came up to the game meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, when, uh, Ms. Varno was, was put into the, into the, her, her, her position. You know, we asked at that time, uh, if they would consider a postponing that just out of good practices to interview people at.
Why? What was the reason for you?
Why did you want to interview?
Why would you want to interview somebody who's already been in the position already? Why would you?
Because they're.
Because what did you want? The control over the game. Basically, so I'm just saying, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm leaving, I'm done. But I just want to say, people are watching. They might not be in this room, but they're watching. In November, there's an election coming up and some very important decisions that need to be made to make the city of Alexandria look like it's supposed to look. And it's not right now. And the powers that are in, it's not looking like it should look. That's all.
Thank you, Carmen. Discussion?
I don't like to say that.
Excuse me. I turned the paper. You turned it that.
Only there's one and five and two.
None of these are ones.
Other than one, excuse me, I'm sorry. More people, I'm sorry.
Other than one, excuse me, I'm sorry, more people, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, Brian, Mr. Rankin, you can be back.
Good afternoon. I'm Jules Green, I live at seventeen fifty-eight Mary's, Alexandria, in the Garden District. Reiterating on what Ms. McCollum said, ordinance seventeen dash two oh two three did give you all the priority to change out your commissioners. Initially, this started out with a four-year serving period. It has changed to a year, eighteen months. Um, my question basically is, in just seven days, there was a selection of a new Gator board director. And as Ms. McCollum said, I'm trying to figure, why is it necessary for Mr. Rubin, for the current councilperson of District Four, to have made these changes? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go through a revolving door on Gator. There's the election coming up in November, Districts One, Three, Five, and Councilman at Large, up, up. They may just sweep all four of those seats, and those people may go in and change the identity of the commissioners on Gator. How can we get economic development for the city of Alexandria, bring jobs to this city? Want people to come to this city? People in this room watching Channel Four and sitting on the internet are looking at the demeanor of this council, the citizens' reactions to this council, and we truly want to know. Not playing the race card, we have two city councilmen at large, neither have a representative from the east side of Alexandria on the Gator board. It's disturbing to quite a few people. I just want to say, what goes around, comes around, and certainly, certainly, I hope you consider what we are doing today, or you're going to do today, to let these citizens know that we have a council that is competent. We have a Gator board that is competent, Chamber of Commerce, Cletus. And then you wonder why all the new businesses that are coming to this parish are going to pine deal. So those are my points. That's my question to you, Mr. Rubin. We've passed Ms. Felder. Uh, if you can, just respond a bit, I would appreciate it greatly. Again, be note, you have the priority to choose who you put on the Gator board. Thank you all for your time.
Dr. Curtis.
Good afternoon, Dr. Curtis Lewis, past Chairman of Gator and currently the acting chair. Uh, it's a lot of disruption. I think they, they've already spoken into the disruption portion, but I just want to reiterate what I said and told you all the, the other day, is this is the most engaged I've ever seen this council with Gator since I've been on in July twenty twenty-one. That's, that's just one of the wonders. Ms. Chaney has been a valuable member of this commission. She served as an officer last year, uh, and this is a question, who, and I'm going to read word for word, did this city council or this administration authorize Mr. Rick Ranson, a former candidate or former assistant, to publicly threaten lawsuits against Gator when it came to our involvement with the U Corps process? I know we had some discussion about the ordinance and the interpretation, but to be publicly threatened by lawsuits when this, this U Corps, and we met with seventy-five million dollar investment, a hundred plus jobs, uh, I just want to know, was he authorized by either the city council or this administration? Because we, I mean, we don't control what other folks do, but it's just a question for clarification.
My sweetest friend, yes, please, thank you, Dr. Curtis, for being here, for his question.
Listen.
That question isn't germane, it's apparent, I am not to report.
Well, I'd say because Ms. Chaney was an integral part of developing this.
It's not germane.
Okay, but, but for the record, he did publicly, uh, I don't know who authorized it, but he did publicly try to put suits or, or threats, put suits on Gator to stop economic development for this area, seventy-five million dollars, a hundred plus jobs, a hundred plus, a hundred and a half jobs, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Jay Scott.
It's certainly rare, I'm sorry. Oh, oh. Jay's got it. If they did some great stuff. Um, I'm speaking. I want to say she put up this whole, you know what I'm saying, and my family's right, personally. Um, Ms. Candace is a great person, a great woman. Um, she's been working for the city of Alexandria for a long time. Before I probably just told you this, she's been out there, she also donated to my people, to my people, and also donated to my people. And I'm proud of her, I'm proud of her. I want you to continue to work, I'm not really happy. We know you got a couple of votes, I want you to be honest, let's be clear, that's not play the game.
Yes.
I don't play the game, I'm a legal official also. So I feel like, okay, I'm gonna be right by the people, if I don't, then I'm, I'm nobody. Um, I don't take bribes, I don't take contributions, I work off myself. So, and I tend to take bribes, this is broad. This is, this is, this is the loss of us as black people and the white. And you can't, you can't see though, because you're the president, no president in this city ever won their race. When they had president, you said, you gave it up. You gave it back to a man who ain't never did it. So that, that's talk like we stick to sleep. I'm lying, I'm telling you, the Gator board, which I gave on stage, you're right, you gonna lose. I don't put all my money behind you losing, because this is retarded, this is disrespectful. Mr. Lord, you don't talk to black people like that. Sir, I'm a legal official, but you never in your life, you expect a lot of black opinion, long as I'm around with you.
Please be my your man, sir.
I'm being dramatic.
You're threatening people.
No, I'm telling you, anybody who pops up, threaten, you did it, you did it, and you thought it was cool and dangerous.
What I did, sir?
You thought it made a show up, that's disrespectful.
Well, sir, he was interrupting our meeting, I'm sorry.
He's not, we talking, sir, could you please refrain from what you're saying, listen, that's respectful.
I'm sorry, I was disrespectful, but he was interrupting our meeting.
Why do I have to warn you? You're wrong, man, you're wrong, man, I'm wrong, man.
Let's stay off your name.
I'm, I'm staying too many with you. Let's build a, a group of people that's going to do something right for the people, people, listen, brother. You're a duck, sitting duck, you play the game with people. You're not being fair to the people. Don't try and look to me.
Ms. Chaney.
I'm sorry, whenever, because I'm sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Candace Chaney, and I stand here today before God, this council, my community, to say thank you, Mr. Rubin, for allowing me the pledge of serving on such a prestigious board where I have had the honor of representing my community. And even though you didn't appoint me, you did call my home and asked if I would be interested in staying on, and staying on after the ordinance was amended, and I stated yes, and you allowed me up until now. And I have been awarded honor because it allowed me the opportunity to be inspired by a woman with such great work ethics and leadership skills, with a compassion to help others, as well as showed me how important Gator is to this city. So congratulations, Ms. Angie, on your new position. Lastly, to my community, thank you for the love and support that you have shown to Ms. Snow and myself. We greatly appreciate it. And to you, Mr. Rubin, see you later.
Discussion.
First, um, Ms. Candace, I'd like to thank you for your time, your dedication, that you have spent on the Gator board. Thank you. Um, today, or shall I say, let's start with last week, special call meetings to appoint commissioners to the Gator board. I'm not sure that, if it happened before in the history of the council. And, um, it was disturbing to me, the timing to me is the only thing that got my attention. To you, Ms. Felder, and to you, Mr. Rubin, I would not have had a problem voting for your permission if the timing did not seem like it was off.
Could I? But you're saying the timing was wrong?
It was. No, I'm not saying.
Okay, I'll respond after, I'll respond after.
I'm not saying that the timing was wrong. To me, the timing seemed wrong, it was wrong. Your timing may have been another timing as now, as you change your commissioner. But to me, the timing seemed as if, when Ms. Bernado got elected as executive director, then it was time to change commissioners. These are my opinions, this is how I feel. You guys may not feel like that, but this is how I feel, this is what it looks like to me, and this is what it looks like to me. So all I'm saying, don't think that I didn't want your commissioners. I don't know Mr. Upton, his resume sounds good, I don't know Mr. Coleman, and you made his resume sound good. All I'm saying, to me, the timing did not look presentable, and for that, that is why I voted no for your commissioner.
Um, let me tell you the actual facts of the timing. Um, Tuesday morning, January thirteenth, I gave my commissioner notice, and I put it on the our regular scheduled meeting agenda for, yes, for this past week. And our agenda went out at, you know, whatever time Ms. Donna and Ms. Emily released it. So my commissioner, for me to replace it, was on our regularly scheduled meeting agenda. That is the truth. Um, and then, that afternoon, several hours later, after our meeting agenda had been publicly released, Gator called a special board meeting to appoint Ms. Bernado effective immediately, after I had already put into place that I, by resolution, wanted to replace my person. So then I asked at the meeting, at their special meeting on Wednesday, the next day, I asked, why the rush? Because Ms. Bernado was at, already being acting director, executive director for a period of ninety days, according to their succession plan, and it had only been twenty-two days into that ninety days. So for me, it, it, you know, I don't, that, that was the timeline for myself. My resolution was put on our regular meeting agenda in a timely manner on Tuesday morning.
When I say timely, I'm not talking about the time, Mary, that you're speaking of, Councilwoman Felder. I'm talking about the timely matter as of when Ms. Bernado got elected unanimously by the board to serve. That's the timely matter I'm talking about. It just did not fit to me, it just did not look right to me.
Okay.
I understand what you, I understand exactly what you're saying, but three and a half years, Ms. Chaney sat on this seat, two and a half years with snows and sat on this seat, you had more time, and you and Mr. Rubin had enough time to change your mind. But as soon as Ms. Bernado got elected.
That's not true. I'm sorry, that is, that is absolutely not true.
Well, that's, that's how, that is how I would end, and this is not. No, no, no. This is not to start confusion, I'm stating the way that I feel, the way that it looked to me. And it did look right, it did look respectable. Um, if Mr. Mola would not have retired, would the commissioner, would you all have changed your commissioners? All I'm saying, it did not look presentable.
Okay.
It did not look respectable.
So, yes, my answer is yes. I gave Ms. Snow the respect of she wanted to continue, continue serving. I spent a year deciding, is this the person that I want to continue representing me? Is there somebody else? Um, I had people in the community approach me of appointing them, I had people ask me different things about my Gator commissioner, and I always looked into the person that they recommended and considered, is this the person that I think is best? And on every time, that answer was no. And then I decided to appoint my new commissioner myself, and that was my choice. And that happened before Ms., um, Ms. Bernado was appointed executive director. I had no clue what was happening with the executive director position, I knew she was acting, um, as executive director, and that, that, that's all I knew. And so I can with a wholehearted, honest integrity, everything, say that that was my plan. I don't know anything that happened after that, but for me, what was suspect for me is I put in that my commissioner, I wanted to replace them, and then there was a special call meeting immediately after that to approve Ms. Bernado.
Okay, I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm not accusing anyone of anything, I'm just trying to make it. You aware, and not just you, Ms. Felder, I'm trying to make this whole council, the community, aware of how this look. It does not look well. We as a council, we got involved in Gators business, where we can't count our own business.
Well, Gator is our appointing body.
I understand that, I understand that, but all I'm saying is, until we can work together, until we can work together, this is something that this council has to do, and you guys, and this may be germane, but you all, you have to include us. You have to stop having your meetings without us. When we got elected here, we got elected to work together. That's what I want to do, I want to work together with this council as one, not four against three, but as one. And until we can do this, our city will not prosper, we will not grow. It's not about a wife, it's not about who holds what position. Ms. Bernado, nineteen years working up under Clifford Mole, nineteen years? And we need to go into the public and look for someone?
Somebody one, that's totally.
I'm done. My comments are not.
Let, let me divide. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead. Uh, Ms. Candace, talking for them, did you not struggle together from the beginning? Ms. Snow, I told you the same thing. Dr. Lewis, comment you made was flat on, because that last Wednesday meeting, I've never seen that much compassion the way we far brush y'all meeting, what even ours business. At the Gator board, I guarantee you, I'm, I go to more Gator meetings than all these guys. I go to see what it's about. And time, it's all about time, they can say they want it, I'd have been all over this world, I'm, I'm a veteran. If you look at the duck walking the duck, it's a duck. I'm gonna tell you, I am so embarrassed, a special call meeting to appoint a commissioner, we have people out there shooting in the street, no special call meeting. Heat waiting to hide his son else, no special call meeting. No, we have brown what, no special call meetings? This is embarrassing. I didn't work all over this world, I didn't do stuff that I can tell you guys what I did. I didn't do stuff that I can tell you guys what I did. Although, I still did proudly accept my nomination as councilmember of District Two. And in my sixty-two years, I've never felt so embarrassed as I've been the last eight days. We need to do together. We are sitting on a doggone powder key. A powder key. I have a mother that I hope she recognized me when I walk in the house today because she at that stage now, but I'm up here at a special call meeting to appoint the Gator commissioner for Gator. And I know what you're talking about, because I have a son just like this, who fought the war that, that can't, that, that give emotion like I am right now for some BS. I'm related to the vision. This ain't the most important decision I've had in my life. But I know this now, I can't even get a phone call returned to me. Now, we sit here and still go back like nineteen seventy, I lived here in nineteen eighty. Got doggone twenty, forty-four years ago, and Alexandria still going back. I'm getting phone calls from senators of another state worried about what's going on in Alexandria. Because they are watching. They're watching. I get the phone calls from Chattanooga, Tennessee, I don't know about Chattanooga, Tennessee. Mr. Johnson, what's going on down in Alexandria? We up here laughing. Mark, it's embarrassing. We need to turn it around. These are private media. I have friends too. I never tell who to hang out with, who. But last, the last eight days been embarrassing. And I can see straight, straight through, so don't, don't tell, don't tell me about the timing. Do not tell me about the timing. That's all I can say.
Chris Johnson, I'm gonna answer one thing. Yes, the one thing only, I called you last Tuesday. I called, I called Ms. Perry last Tuesday to discuss this. Neither one of you, both answered the phone. You both said, I'll call you back, and neither one of you did. That's all I got to say.
I can tell you I'll call you back. I text you, why would you consider, why, why would you consider going public? I felt that Ms. Bernado was good for that position. So, no, I didn't have a reason to call you back when I told you what I said, and I meant what I said. Little purpose of the call.
Okay, that's all I have to say, okay. Why shall let this, shall let this, uh?
Me call.
First, let call. Roll call, roll.
Mr. Rubin?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Fowler? Mr. Washington, Mr. Harrison, Mr. President.
Second item resolution confirms the appointment of Greg Upton to serve as commissioner of the Greater Alexandria Economic Development Authority Gator. Your motion, please?
No, Mr. Rubin.
Second.
Second item is correct.
Public comment, you have two people to talk, Ms. Bell.
Good afternoon. My name is Ms. Bell, and I have a couple of questions. And yes, someone used the race card. So Greg Upton served as counsel for Gator. Got fired by Mr. Moller. His law firm is a representative for the city of Alexandria. Gator does, is an independent entity. You don't have to be in a district to select somebody as a commissioner. All of this sounds funny, fishy, a very stinky smell. So you're gonna replace Ms. Chaney, Greg Upton, who once served there before, but got fired, but you're gonna put him there again? Because you, Mr. Rubin, wants him. When it comes to the city, yes, you guys changed the ordinance brought up by Reddick.
So.
Yeah, in his absence. But if somebody is doing an outstanding job in their positions and you get no freaking complaints, why replace them? And I have one more question, and you may or may not answer it. Why is it y'all working so hard to make sure black people can't make it in this city of Alexandria without y'all parents being in it? Yes, election is coming up in every one of you lot. Get prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Next, my daughter.
Ms. Bell, and I'll ask the questions that I wanted to ask. So again, Mr. Upton used to work with Gator, he was actually on the council for Gator. He was a commissioner, right, at one time. And he did work for Mr. Moller at one time, right? And he got fired.
He worked for the council, he worked for the commission, not Mr. Moller.
Okay. But they fired him, right? He got fired or dismissed or whatever. So what is this? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. No big deal, I just want to know. So if he left, was he contracted, was he contracted with Gator? So what, why are we putting him back in there if he was a success on first lines?
I don't, I do not believe.
I mean, he's your, he's your choice, he's your appointee, so should you know that about him?
He was not released because, for cause. He did nothing wrong. He did nothing wrong, he was not released because he was not a good attorney and did not do a very good job on representing Gator.
Okay, so your thing is.
He was released.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Is because at the time, Mr. Moller preferred to have this, uh, sorry, somebody else in his place. That's all I can say.
That's all you know about what happened. But he's your appointee, shouldn't you know more about that? Because you're replacing him, when you, you're replacing Ms. Chaney.
I've answered your question recently.
Okay, you answer, okay, thank you. But again, like we said, November's coming. That's all we have to say, November's coming. It is timeout.
Discussion? Discussion?
Thank you.
I would like to say that Ms. Upton is not here today because he is in bed and rooted on legal matters. And so he could not be here today. And he wouldn't, that, that, that is a reason. First, we've been out. Roll call, which?
Mr. Rubin?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Perry? Ms. Johnson?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Washington, that's what I told them.
Okay, you guys have it. Lee Rubin was successful in removing Candace Chaney from the, uh, from the Gator Commission and, um, replacing him with, uh, Upton. I'm gonna get out of here, y'all have a great day.